Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, June 5, 2023. It is 6:00 PM in the evening, and I would ask two things, please. Please, everyone, silence your cell phones, and if anyone is audio or video recording this open meeting, please notify me as the chair. And the placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the contact of this meeting. Is anyone audio or video recording this meeting? Thank you, Noel. Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening, we're going to start with our committee interviews and appointments. And we will start with the Plastic Reduction Advisory Committee. And the board, the Select Board, will be appointing seven members. However, we have two members, two people who are looking for appointments, who are unavailable for interviews at this time. I believe everyone has a copy of the Charge of this committee. It was published in The Enterprise on Friday, so you know what you're getting yourselves into. Correct? Okay, so let's start with our first applicant, Amy Roth, who would be the Board of Health member.
Hi.
Hi, Amy. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Okay, you have been asked to represent the Board of Health. Is there anything you would like to share with the board about being appointed to this committee?
Just that I have tenure on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee as well, so that experience in the Board of Health kind of come together well in this particular committee. And Scott, the health agent, Scott McGann, very interested in participating as well, but as a silent member. So I'll be kind of coordinating with him in his role.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Are we going to individually appoint or go through the list?
I think we'll go through the list first and then go in individually a point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Christine Copley, Solid Waste Advisory Committee member. Is Christine here? Mr. Robinson, do you want to come up for a second?
Alan Robinson, Chair of the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, of which Christine is a member.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
Just say that we discussed this as a committee, and Christine volunteered to be our representative, and we unanimously voted to support that.
Great.
And we're looking forward to her participating, and with Amy participating, together with Amy, who's become an alumnus of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Joshua Flanders. Hi, Joshua.
Hello.
Would you tell us a little bit about yourself and your willingness to be appointed to this committee?
Yeah, sure. So I operate Bad Martha Brewery in East Falmouth, and I also oversee the one in Agri-Town Martha's Vineyard. I do all of our ordering for our kitchen supplies and products, so, you know, plastic materials and things like that would fall under that. We don't actually do a lot of takeout or a lot of prepared foods in plastics, so really the result of this wouldn't have a major impact on us. But I think my experience working in the kitchen and ordering those products, and my relationships with vendors, easy access to their catalogs for supplies would help, you know, in exploring information for the committee. So I thought I could be a useful person.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I could add one.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Mr. Flanders, you mentioned you don't use much plastic. What type of substitutes are you using?
Well, I just mean in general, we don't do a lot of takeout containers. I mean, we're mostly pizza in terms of our food, being more beer-focused and on-premise rather than takeout. So I do have a couple. I do have a plastic container that I use for like salads to go, and I use some plastic ramekins. But I just meant in terms of volume of materials. But certainly what we're using, you know, I would understand that, and that would have some impact on us.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Thank you. Michael Lewis is not available for an interview. Steven Vanerson?
Hi.
Hi, Steven.
Good evening. Steve Vanerson, I own Bean &amp; Cod. Looking to apply my experience in the food industry from a restaurant point of view. We do a substantial amount of takeout. We do use plastic utensils and other service ware. We have toned that down over the years. Several years ago, I met with Jill Newbauer and helped her to get started on a program that she calls Buy Better and Toss Smarter. This is 10 pages, sandwich.
Thank you.
This is the actual booklet that they created.
Is this for me?
No.
Okay, you can go back to the podium. Thank you.
The whole write-up was 40 pages, which I have available on the computer. It has appendices and procedures and a lot of other, what actually went. She hired a person and created an internship to study the reduction of plastics in the restaurant industry, and details a lot of different things, how many different restaurants she spoke to. And I just gave her a little guidance in the first week that she was here, and we've adopted several of her recommendations. In addition to my friend here, I also have access to the catalogs because we do order a substantial amount from Cisco and other vendors. So I think I could be an advocate for the restaurant side, specifically takeout.
Thank you.
Unlike my friend here, we do a lot of takeout.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
No, I think that was a pretty good description of his service. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Geraldine Shad. Lynn?
Good evening. So I'm Lynn Shad. I'm from 50 Chestnut Street. I am a member of the Beach Committee as well as a town meeting member, Precinct 3. For those of you who know me, I am very environmentally active, and I'm also the daughter of a small business owner, so I recognize the need to really take into consideration the expenses that might be involved in making some changes, moving away from plastics. But I also recognize that we need to move away from plastics because they are very much a health concern for all of us and a health concern for our environment. And so when this question sort of came up at town meeting, and we were unable to resolve it then, and I heard about this committee being formed, I felt like I wanted to be a part of it. I think it's a very positive step to be taken, and I'd like to see it as we're all in this together. It's not small business people against the rest of us. We're all the consumers. We use these products, and I think we should be able to come up with solutions that are going to be beneficial for us and for the environment. So that's my reason for applying.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Stephanie Murphy?
Hi. I'm Stephanie Murphy. I'm a Falmouth resident, and I work at Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution for the Woods Hole Sea Grant Program. Excuse me. I'm a communicator there. I have worked on this issue for the last four or five years, the plastics issue. I picked up on a shrink wrap recycling project that Sea Grant had started a number of years ago, and it was a single container in a Hooey parking lot to collect boat shrink wrap and recycle it. And in the past four years, we've grown the program from a single container to involve the county. It's a countywide program now. We partnered up with Carrie Parcell from Barnstable County Solid Waste Coordinator, and now six towns across the Cape. And it's a free program for boat owners and boatyards to bring their plastic. And we recycle anywhere from five to 10 tons a year, but it's growing. Additionally, several years ago, just prior to the pandemic, I worked with Care for the Cape and Islands on a guide that sort of built on Jill Newbauer's guide to look at alternatives to plastic service ware. And we put that out through Care for the Cape and Islands. It's on their website. But it happened just as the pandemic hit and restaurants were closing down, so I'm not, I can't attest to the, you know, impact of that guide, but it's there. And things are always changing, so it always needs to be updated, and I'm pretty sure Care is in the process of doing that as well. Also with Care, I recently applied for a grant through the National Sea Grant Program to, and we were successful. We got funded for a three-year study to look at alternatives to, in specifically, service ware, plastic service ware. So over the next three years, we are trying to build a coalition of people, similar to what we're doing here in the town, where we've got business owners, restaurateurs, food industry folks, environmentalists, scientists, to put together a coalition to look at the issue. And ideally, we plan to pilot a reusable service ware program. So I think there's kind of a nice connection between what's happening here in the town and what we're hoping to do over the next three years.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
No, thanks.
None? Thank you. Philip Gessen? Mr. Gessen, how are you?
I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm well. You don't need to say too much because we saw you on town meeting floor, so if you want to just give us a quick sentence or two about why you'd like to be on this board, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so my name is Philip Gessen. I grew up in Falmouth, Massachusetts here. I was a high schooler, and I went to Falmouth High School. Now I'm a college student, but I have been involved with the plastics issue in Falmouth since high school, since junior year. And through it all, I've seen a lot of progress being made, and I think that Falmouth has the opportunity to make a stand and to do the right thing and to move forward on the environmental issue because we are very, very closely connected to our environment, and I would love to be a part of moving us towards a greener world.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Just one, I know you were really passionate on town meeting floor about the elimination of plastics. If we come to some sort of a compromise where we get rid of a lot of plastics in a year, but not all of them, and we work towards a goal, would you be okay with that?
I mean, I'd love to see where this committee goes. I'd love to see the elimination of all plastics, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Obviously, it's a committee with a lot of different various opinions, and it's important to work together and to understand every perspective and to have this be an issue that the entire community stands behind.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And Daniel Gessen is not available for an interview until after June 12.
I think he's military.
He does. He has military. Yes. So would we like to, would the void like to move forward and create this committee? We have two people that cannot do interviews at this time. Can I be comfortable moving forward?
I would too.
Okay.
I would like to move that we include Mr. Michael Lewis. The reason for that is he's been reaching out to me about these issues ever since the first moment that the Town Meeting Mourn Book came out. He's very motivated to discuss it, and he's expressed to me that he has been already looking in and trying products, some of them with limited success, but I felt like he was really engaged in the matter, and I would like to hear his input on it. So that's my first recommendation.
So are you moving him for an appointment?
Are you going to move him to an appointment?
I am moving to appoint him, yes.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I heard Mr. Lewis speak eloquently at the informational hearing that the Chamber had initiated for this issue, so I agree with Mr. Brown.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, move, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just said no.
Oh.
Okay, so, okay.
I'd move Amy Roth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move Amy Roth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Madam Chair, I'd move Christine Copley.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Madam Chair, I'd move Philip Gessen.
I'll second that as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move Philip Gessen. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll let somebody else talk.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Muscally?
I'd like to nominate Geraldine Shad.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move Geraldine Shad. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are up to one, two, three, four, five. Okay, we have two additional seats.
So as I understand, we need one more from the public, and we need one more from the food establishment, I think is the way the committee's set up to be.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Muscally?
Yes, I'd move Stephanie Murphy as the public advocate or as a member.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would move, this is a hard one. Did anybody, anybody else have a motion? Go ahead.
I was going to suggest Mr. Vanerson because he had mentioned that he's got a lot of takeout. It's going to have a high impact. I'm sure he's very interested in the matter.
I'd second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board to move Steven Vanerson? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so that's, so the seven are Amy Roth, Christine Copley, Michael Lewis, Steven Vanerson, Geraldine Shad, Stephanie Murphy, Philip Gessen. Okay? Thank you all very much. Okay, regulatory boards. Board of Health. On the Board of Health, we have two incumbents for reappointment to terms ending 6/30/26. And because we know you both, I'm simply going to give you one minute if you'd like to come up, please, and we'll start with Amy Roth.
Hi, I'm back. Amy Roth, current member of the Board of Health. As I was just appointed to the Plastics Committee, I should probably stay on the Board of Health to represent them. I just started on the Board of Health four, five months ago, but am enjoying my time, would like to continue it there. As I said, I was on Solid Waste Committee before my career in my day life is environmental consulting, so there are a lot of aspects of the Board of Health that overlap with what I do on a daily basis. That's my very short spiel.
Awesome. Any questions or comments from the board?
None here.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to appoint Amy Roth to the Board of Health. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, second incumbent for reappointment to a term ending 6/30/26, Kevin Kroger. Hi, Kevin, you have one minute.
Okay. I've been a resident of the town for about 25 years, and I'm an environmental scientist, and I study nitrogen cycling in the environment in part, and so I've been able to use that background to improve decision-making on the board for six years so far, and I'm starting to get the hang of it, so I think a third term might be useful.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, move Kevin Kroger.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor to move Kevin Kroger to, for reappointment to the Board of Health ending 6/30/26? Aye. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the Conservation Commission, and we have one incumbent for reappointment to a term ending 6/30/26, Stephen Patton.
Thank you. I am a much better candidate for reappointment than I was for appointment, I can assure you. I have become very familiar with all the regulations, and I've enjoyed my term. Our staff is superior. They leave very little left for the board to deal with at our meetings, and that's great. The work that they do with the local engineering and landscaping firms has created, I think, an excellent relationship. We move our items through in a rapid process. I attend the meetings, I do my site visits. I've really enjoyed being a member, and I'd like to continue to be one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Brown?
I have a question. Have you had a chance to do the training session that they do for Conservation Commission?
I have.
Great, thank you.
Several years ago, unfortunately, so maybe a refresher is due, but.
Okay, well, you get one every week. You get one every week, right?
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
I move a point now.
Second.
Move the appointment of Stephen Patton. Steven Patton, excuse me, for a term ending.
6/30/26?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Madam Chair, could I make one other comment unrelated?
No. Go ahead. Of course you can.
I'm a substitute teacher at Falmouth High School, and every year, the DPW comes in and does a spectacular job of freshening up the front of our building, leaving the milkweed, but making sure that everything looks spectacular, and I just wanted to show my appreciation for.
They do it every year, and they've been doing it for a long time. Thank you very much. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one full member position with a term ending 6/30/28, and I believe that the applicant for that is Frank Duffy. And we have an associate member position with a term ending 6/30/26, and Anthony Petrucci has applied for that. So, Mr. Duffy, we're going to look at you first, please.
Good evening, Frank Duffy, a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to thank you for appointing me to the board last October. I've attended all the meetings since then, and I find it very interesting, and I think the board has made some very good decisions since then. I would like to just tell you that, you know, you have excellent staff on this board, Noreen and Ashley do a great job. The members are also very impressive. They come prepared, they do all the homework, and I think we've made some very good decisions. One of the benefits to being on the zoning board that I hadn't really thought of, but I've been a member of the Zoning Bylaw Recodification Working Group for about three years now, and being a member of the board and seeing how the board actually applies the zoning bylaw to real-life situations has really been an eye-opener. I think it's helped my participation on the bylaw, zoning bylaw working group, because previously I kind of looked at it academically. Now I have some experience. So I would ask for an appointment to a regular term for five years. So thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board? Comments from the board?
I'll move Mr. Duffy's appointment.
Did you, hold on.
I just wanted to comment that I've heard from other board members how they've enjoyed working with you and actually learning from your insightful comments, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one associate member position with a term ending 6/30/26, Anthony Petrucci.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Petrucci, North Falmouth, and I think it's important to participate in the community. I've been coming to Falmouth since '69, built our summer house in '88, and retired to that house in 2015 after leaving corporate life. I had occasion this year to be the director-butter to two projects on both sides of me, and the research that I had to do into the bylaws and case law involved with these was fascinating, absolutely fascinating. I learned a tremendous amount about it. I enjoyed being a part of the process. I was asked if I would consider volunteering for this, and I think it's important to volunteer in the community. So I'm here tonight, hoping that you will see my background as someone who could be part of the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
I have a question.
Mr. Zalinski?
Mr. Petrucci, have you attended any meetings?
I attended many, many meetings as a director-butter and listened in and did a lot of research important to those two particular applications.
And you have the time that you realize it's going to take?
I am retired. I have a tremendous amount of time.
Just getting it on the record.
Okay.
I move appointing Mr. Petrucci to the associate position? Yes.
And with a term ending 6/30/26?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. Okay, we're going to move into non-regulatory boards. First board, Affordable Housing Committee. Mr. Patterson?
Look who's here.
Mr. Patterson, you have 20 seconds.
No time.
As you may recall, I served as your liaison to the Affordable Housing Committee for many, many years, and I really liked that opportunity to basically try to make housing less of a social issue here in town because the accessibility of affordable housing is such a difficult challenge, particularly people who don't make as much money as the rest of the town. So that's my motivation, and look forward to serving. It's your pleasure.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Thanks for serving, Sam.
I would like to move this one myself, Mr. Patterson. Sam Patterson to an unexpired term ending 6/30/24 on the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
Any further questions or conversation from the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for your confidence.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We have three vacancies with terms ending 6/30/26, and we have three applicants. Is Paul Joyce here?
Hi.
Welcome, Mr. Joyce.
Great, thank you.
Tell us just a little bit about yourself.
Oh, sure. My name's Paul Joyce. I worked with the Education Association for 30 years. Of those 18, I was dean. I've ridden bikes in a very serious way for about 50 years, and my real interest is in making Falmouth safer for bicycles.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
None, none for me.
Okay.
I'd move approval of Paul Joyce to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, her term ending June 30th, twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Matthew Delaney.
Hi, how you doing?
Hi, Matthew.
How you doing? So, my name's Matt. I've lived in Falmouth for 21 years. I've been commuting and riding bikes for more than half of those years. I work at and now manage the bike shop around the corner, Corner Cycle, and I think I have a lot to offer for the committee.
Awesome. Any questions, comments from the board?
I'll move Mr. Delaney.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Welcome. Okay, Ellen Adams.
Good evening, I'm Ellen Adams. I'm a relative wash shore. I've lived in Falmouth for six years, but I've been visiting because my brother owns Corner Cycle, so I've been coming down here for about 36 years. I'm an avid cyclist, and especially being in Falmouth, an avid walker, and I'm also a naturalist, so I enjoy the, everything that Falmouth Outdoors has to offer, so I'm looking forward to helping on the committee.
Awesome. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
I'd move Ellen Adams to a term ending six thirty twenty-six on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Lucky to have three people so qualified to be on that committee.
Okay, our next is the Commission on Substance Use. Dennis Lyons. Welcome.
Thank you very much, welcome, and good evening to you. My name is Dennis Lyons. I'm a resident of Falmouth. I first bought here in 2008, and I've been living here since 2013, full-time. I'm a registered pharmacist since 1975. I have a small consulting firm that I actually operate out of my house here on Falmouth. My background includes mostly regulatory work. I really stopped practicing as a pharmacist back in the '70s. I've worked with the Department of Public Health, the Control Substance Program, was involved in the original prescription monitoring program, was actually the consultant to DPH and the development of that. And I have, I think, ongoing lingering concerns about the real pandemic of opiate use and the real problem that we still face today with opiate, prescription drug abuse, and so forth. So, I'm interested to become a part of the solution, to try to help the town to deal with this, and I know this committee is charged with expanding access to treatment through naloxone, through education of the public, and expansion in knowledge of what the substance abuse, or the Substance Use Committee is all about.
I looked at your resume, and I liked the fact that you did work around policy, which I think is really, really important.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope, looks good.
I'll entertain a motion.
So, moved.
I'd appoint Mr. Lyons to the Commission on Substance Use, to June 30th, twenty-six.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, EDIC.
That one's being continued. There's a note that says the EDIC interviews applicants first, and then prepares recommendations. The EDIC is scheduling the interview with Sam at its upcoming meeting on June 13th.
So, we're going to hold that? Okay, thank you. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Robert Garrett. Hello, Mr. Garrett?
Hi, yeah, my name is Robert Garrett. Most people in town know me as Hap. That's my nickname, Robert's just my real name. I worked down at the Ecosystem Center Marine Biological Lab for about 30-plus years, Falmouth resident for over 40, and I've seen a lot of changes in how the dump, the Falmouth dump, has changed over that timeframe, and it's amazing how far we've progressed. And I'm retired now, and would like to help continue making that progress.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I would move Robert Garrett to a term on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, ending June 30th, twenty-six.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, South Cape Beach Advisory Committee, Debbie Scott. Welcome, Debbie.
Hi, good evening. Debbie Scott, Philadelphia Street. I'm seeking appointment to the South Cape Beach Advisory Committee. I was looking for some regional information about coastal erosion and wind power, and I came across this committee, and I noticed there's no meetings or meeting minutes to look at, so I don't know if the committee is inactive or not transparent, so I would like to be appointed to it, so I can try to move it forward. I think Falmouth needs a seat at the table with the different concerns that's coming up, alcohol and marine life. I previously completed a few terms on the Falmouth Municipal Building Committee while we renovated the library and rebuilt the banchel. So, I've had excellent attendance, and I think I can be a liaison for this government and for the regional committee.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the board?
Has the committee been meeting? I'm just curious, do we know?
So, it's a, it's a regional committee, and honestly, I don't know. We do get an annual report from them every year, so we can certainly provide the annual report that we get, and the report indicates that they do meet several times per year. But in terms of the minutes, I don't know if that's posted by the host community. Please come look into that.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Awesome.
I'd move appointing Debbie Scott to South Cape Beach Advisory Committee with a term ending June 30th, twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the Water Quality Management Committee, and it looks like we have two positions with terms ending six thirty twenty-six. We have three applicants, and we will start with Ron Zweig. Mr. Zweig, are you here?
Yep.
Are we going to hold until the end to nominate?
Yes, we will not nominate until, because we only have two positions, we will hear all three candidates, and then we will do our votes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Evening.
Anything you'd like us to hear from you, other than what is in your application, Mr. Zweig?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. Well, I would just like to say, basically, my interest in being on the committee is really working on consultation and with the community, community outreach and education, and as well as, I think, trying to get the committee back on a regular basis on FCTV, because I think that the community could really benefit from the importance of, at least in terms of the investment aspects of the, of the challenges that the committee's addressing. I, I'm interested in other aspects. In terms of conservation, energy conservation, I was on, I've served for the town on the Cape Light Compact for about 10 years, and I was chair of the Cape Light Compact for the latter part of that, and as well as interested in resource conservation, you know, such as some of the new technologies that are coming up, and with regard to eco-toilets, if you like, and urine diversion, and that type of thing. One other critical element in all of this, too, I think, is the environmental impact aspects. Environmental impact assessments of, of water quality management can, need to be considered carefully, too, because they can have adverse unintended consequences. Another element to it, too, is that I really encourage, and I have basically, with the committee, had organized peer reviews of some aspects, so it's trying to bring in other opinions outside the committee, from experts, from universities, and, and I think that another element, too, is, is that I have worked, as you can see from my resume, in quite a bit of public sector investment. So, it's something, it's another aspect, a critical aspect, in considering the financial aspects of, of these interventions, and both the community as well as the individual household level, and I think that, that, that I would also work toward the committee really presenting more the options that are before the committee to the board, not just the conclusion they may come up with for the other ones. Fortunately, you've had Mr. Brown, who has been a steady for years now, a part of the committee in the sense of being, being your liaison, so that's been great. And, and so, I think that that's really a few points. Anyway, I have another longer list here, but I'll just stop there.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I would comment, it's interesting that you mentioned that, because it's one concern I have, Ron, is that after a vote's been taken, you continue to advocate for the minority position, and, I mean, I don't always get my way on this board, but once we vote, I support the vote of the board, so that's, just going to throw that out there, that's a concern I have.
Well, may I respond to that? It's, no, thank you. I would say yes, that has been an element, but on some occasions, that there has been, the advocacy has still resulted in a positive outcome. In other words, it may take time for the committee to really appreciate some of these ideas, okay? And then by proponing it, and, for example, there was even a, you know, a few years ago, I had a warrant article in a Springtown meeting that was voted down, and then I advocated for it, and by the Falltown meeting, the following Falltown meeting, it was voted in unanimously. So, I don't necessarily think that if you, you know, if you don't succeed it right away, it could just be that it takes time to understand and this kind of thing, but that's, that would be the case. If there were something, I will say it, that if there were something that I, that I had a minority position on, I would still continue, if I believed in it, understood it, and tried to bring the, the understanding of it forward, I would, I would continue, not overwhelmingly, but I would basically, maybe, maybe I would succeed, but, but I appreciate the viewpoints of, of committee members. I mean, I've worked with hundreds of groups, okay, and, and projects in group decision-making processes, and it takes time sometimes for groups to come to consensus on things, and sometimes the minority opinion ends up being the, the lead opinion, so I appreciate what you're saying, and you were right in terms of, of the way I, I tend to work with groups.
Any, any other questions or comments from the board?
No, that was my one concern.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zweig.
Thank you.
John Waterbury?
I'm John Waterbury. I'm currently serving on the Board of Health, of which I've served on and off from sometime in the early '90s. I also was one of the charter members of the Water Quality Committee, and I look forward to being able to serve on that committee again. We're coming to some very critical decisions, you know, on that committee. We're looking now at ocean outfalls. I was one of the principal people working with the Coalition for Buzzards Bay when we changed the Ocean Sanctuaries Act in 2014 to allow for ocean outfalls, which had previously been prohibited.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just comment that Mr. Waterbury was an early advocate of the outfall, and I'd like to see him be able to be participating in the further discussion of that.
I concur with Mr. Brown's assessment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Waterbury. Edward Jallowick, did I say your name correctly?
Perfectly, thank you.
Oh, nice.
For the record, Edward Jallowick, 120 Worcester Court. I've been a resident of Falmouth since 1996. I'm a retired engineer, corporate management experience, sales, marketing experience, construction, management of projects, corporate design of facilities, and I've had a long-term interest in waste stream management, particularly in fluids. So, as I have been attending the last four, including one I had to leave early tonight, we, Water Quality Management Committee meetings, I, I find it a fascinating topic, a very vital topic. It's a basic need of society to have good, clean water to drink, and a good way to get rid of your waste products. And without it, you can't find effective ways to save your estuaries, you can't find effective places and ways to build additional housing to address that crisis. It's such a basic part of the need of a society, and particularly Falmouth with our estuaries. I feel with my experience on serving many committees throughout my career, from hospital boards to United Ways, to disability advisory committees, and I've always been a communicator, a facilitator. I like to listen to everyone's opinion, everyone's ideas, and try to help build a consensus to make an informed decision, and I think my experience doing that can go forward and help Falmouth as it looks at new solutions to this. As Mr. Waterbury mentions, the outfall pipe is, I think, the long-term way to go, and the only way to go to address a lot of our problems. So, I would welcome an opportunity to serve, and I hope you'll support me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment that I've observed Mr. Jallowick in certain meetings, and he always seems to be well-informed.
Madam Chair, with that being said, I'd move Mr. Jallowick to a term ending six thirty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd move John Waterbury to the same term, six thirty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Mr. Muscally? I didn't hear you.
On the first, I voted no, where I didn't have an opportunity to register a vote.
Okay, so, Mr. Jallowick, you voted no. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then on Mr. Waterbury?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to committee reappointments. And I will go through these in a similar way that we do the consent agenda. I will reach, read each board, and I will read each member who is up. If anybody would like to hold a committee, please notify me as the chair. Affordable Housing Committee, Pamela Harding Barat, term ending six thirty twenty-six. Agricultural Commission, Jane Voss, Stan Ingram, Amy Vickers, terms ending six thirty twenty-six. Beach Committee, I'm going to hold. Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Peter Mill, term ending six thirty twenty-six. Commission on Substance Use, Samantha Bauer, term ending six thirty twenty-six. Commission on Disabilities, Kathleen Haynes, Caroline Knox, terms ending six thirty twenty-six. Community Preservation Committee, Sandra Cuney, Thomas Crane, Russ Robbins, all ending six thirty twenty-six, and I will also hold this committee. Constable Thomas Zein, term ending six thirty twenty-six. Energy Committee, Alessandro Bochaneli. Say it for me, please. Bochaneli, I love it. Eleanor Ling, Matt Patrick, all ending six thirty twenty-six. Golf Advisory Committee, Barbara Dixon, Brian Arthur, again, six thirty twenty-six. Recreation Committee, Sandra Cuney, Patricia Morano, Scott Gelfe, all ending six thirty twenty-six. Shellfish Advisory Committee, Daniel Ward, David Heffernan, David Bailey, all ending six thirty twenty-six. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Alan Robinson, Ruth Brazier, six thirty twenty-six. Veterans Council Committee, Brian Hodder, Paula Smith, Robert Foose, six thirty twenty-four. Veterans Council Committee, Brian Hoder, Paula Smith, Robert Foose, 6/30/24. Water Quality Management Committee, Stephen Rafferty, 6/30/26. Waterways Committee, Kevin King, 6/30/26. Veterans Council Committee, William Doherty, term 6/30/24. He is the Amvets representative. Falmouth Lodge 2380 of the Elks representative, Lieutenant Colonel Elizabeth Sweeney, term 6/30/24. Parking Clerk, Patricia O'Connell, 6/30/24. And Assistant Parking Clerk, Mary Ellen Lopes, 6/30/24.
Madam Chair, did we read Human Services Committee?
Did I miss that? Yes. Human Services Committee, Malane Chiato, 6/30/26. Thank you.
I would move approval of all of those that have been read?
Except we're holding the Beach Committee and the Community Preservation Committee. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I need a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will go back to the Community Preservation Committee, and I need to abstain from voting for Russell Robbins. So we can take a vote on Sandra Cuny and Thomas Crane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Russell Robbins?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Okay, Beach Committee, Barbara Schneider?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain. John Strazula?
Move approval.
I think it's Joe.
I'm sorry, Joseph, Joseph Strazula.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will move on to open session. We have a proclamation for the Day of Portugal.
Whereas the town of Falmouth is home to a large number of Portuguese-American people, and whereas the Portuguese culture is praiseworthy and world-famous, and whereas Luiz Vaz de Camos, the famous 16th-century epic poet, is a symbol of Portuguese cultural achievements and is honored by Portuguese people the world over on this day, and whereas members and friends of the Portuguese have formed an association to foster Portuguese culture and instill a pride of heritage, and whereas a committee was organized to plan a celebration of these events, the Day of Portugal, the remembrance of the dearly departed, and whereas Falmouth joins with other Portuguese communities in recognition of Luiz Vaz de Camos's great accomplishment of recording Portugal's notable and remarkable history to be promoted on this day. Now therefore, we, Nancy R. Taylor, Edwin Scott P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelé Scott Price, and Robert P. Mascali, as select board of the town of Falmouth by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim June 10, 2023, as Day of Portugal. It witnessed thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this fifth day of June, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're invited to an event next Saturday. I have a conflict.
Mr. Brown?
We're invited to the Day of Portugal event next Saturday, but I'm unfortunately unable to attend as we have prior commitment.
As do I.
And I'll be out of town.
I'll be at a wedding.
And I'm the emcee at the Oak Grove dedication for the G A R at four, so if I can get done with that by five, I'll attend.
Which is unfortunate, because it's a fun event.
I know, I've been to it.
It's really fun. Yeah, a lot of us have done it.
I'll make my very best attempt to make it.
Okay, recognition. We would like to take a moment to recognize Michael Galasso, who is part of the EDIC Board of Directors. He joined the board in January of 2009 and is the longest-serving member on the board's history. His most significant contribution was the role that he played in the restoration of the Falmouth Station. He led the board's efforts to structure an agreement with Commonwealth to lease the Falmouth Station property for a period of 99 years. He then secured the state funds to renovate the station and was the EDIC's representative throughout the construction process. He's also served as the chairman of the EDIC for multiple terms during his 14-year tenure. So we would really like to thank Mr. Galasso for his work and recognize him. Awesome.
Just, just Madam Chairman, I
Mr. Mascali?
I've spoken with Michael. He wishes he were here. He's actually at a housing conference down in Philadelphia
In Philadelphia, I believe.
This week, so, but he appreciates the recognition.
Thank you for that. We would also, and if you want to weigh on in this at all, Mr. Johnson Staub, please feel free to, but we've, we really would like to recognize three members of the Communications Department. They are John Boncik, Amanda Oliver, and Stephanie Barry, and they've been putting overtime, working really hard over at the Communications Center for the last couple of months as we've been short-staffed. They've really been great at putting in time and dedicating so much time away certainly from their families and other personal obligations to make sure that they can keep continuous operations at the Communications Center, and I thought it was important to acknowledge them.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I really appreciate that. They have seen us through a difficult period with a staffing shortage, and obviously the continuity of public safety relies on our communications officer as the first line of communication, and they've really stepped up, so I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Announcements from the board? Or any other recognitions?
Well, this is sort of an announcement and a recognition. I attended on the 24th of May the regimental, the regimental change of command at Mass Maritime, and I'd like to recognize the outgoing regimental commander, a young lady from Falmouth, Abigail Pope, who is an emergency management major, very, very impressive individual, and I wish her the best, and felt like it was appropriate, since she is from Falmouth, to recognize her tonight.
Falmouth High School grad, wonderful leader at MMA, and just a really wonderful young woman.
Very impressive.
Not to diminish from the other recognitions,
Thank you.
But if I could make one more, along with Mr. Zalinski and Mr. Mascali, we attended the Veterans Ceremony for Memorial Day on Monday. It was, as usual, very well-done and very well-attended. I'd like to recognize the Veterans Council, and also Don Lincoln and Julie Catigan for their organization, and the DPW for having the place look so perfect. But in addition to recognizing the folks that put it on, and the Colonel from the Army, and I'm sorry I forgot his name right now, it was, I want to say Consoni, but I'm sure that's wrong, but anyway, he did a really great job, and every year, there's slightly different take on military life and the aspects of it that are, that they bring to the event. But what I really wanted to remember today was the fact that how many years it was that Andy Dufresne and Ahmed Mustafa were the tag team for that event, and it was just, as long as I can remember. And, you know, those guys are tireless service for veterans, and I really appreciate it. Andy celebrated his 50th year in-town meeting, and Ahmed is still involved. We saw him at FCTV on Wednesday. Just really appreciate those guys and what they've done for the Veterans Council in this town, so just wanted to give that a mention, too.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mascali?
Yes, I'd like to recognize belonging to each other. They just received a $350,000 ARPA grant from the county commissioners. I was honored to be part of the ceremony there with them. And a wonderful organization, and they're going to be using those funds, as we read in the paper, to purchase a building for the homeless here in town. I'd also like to recognize Falmouth resident Frank Shorter, who many of you know as a gold medal winner for the marathon. He was actually the grand marshal of the Indianapolis 500 this past Memorial Day weekend, so I think he deserves some recognition as well.
Great, thank you.
I just have one more.
Yes.
Mr. Mascali, Mr. Brown and I attended the Wounded Warrior Bike Ride this past week, and I'd just like to recognize the many, many volunteers that helped make that happen, and the warriors for participating. It was a great event.
Great.
And the last thing I forgot to mention, Rob Foose, who's taken over now as the emcee on that Memorial Day, and he does a great job with it as well, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other recognitions? Okay, announcements.
Madam Chair, I have an announcement. On Juneteenth, which is Monday, June 19th this year, at Highfield Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., is a Juneteenth celebration. They'll have live music, dancing, cultural exploration. You can either participate in the events they have or take a reflective walk in Beebe Woods, and they have activities for all ages. So it's a, it'll be a good event for people to learn about Juneteenth if they don't know already and to celebrate it.
What time does that kick off?
It's 11:00 a.m.
6:19.
Yes, and they have music from 11:00 to 11:45.
Awesome.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Mascali?
On June 22nd, the Commission on Substance Abuse will be holding a community forum at St. Barnabas. I think we were all received invitations recently.
Everyone should have received an invitation in their mailbox.
5:30 to 8:30 at St. Barnabas.
Yep. Thank you.
One more, on Wednesday at the library, there's going to be a meeting, a housing discussion.
The huddle, which unfortunately, because we have meetings on Wednesdays, I can't get there, but
I've saved that on my calendar, so I'll be attending that.
So you'll be going? Excellent.
I'll be there as well.
Great, so you can report back.
I'm pretty sure I'll be there as well.
Excellent. Okay, any other announcements? Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the select board may not participate in any discussion or debate of the topic. Anyone here for public comment? Yes, sir?
Jim Gray, West Falmouth, I'm the president of West Falmouth Village Association. I'd like to express the concern of the people of West Falmouth with the staffing situation that we've had, particularly over Memorial Day weekend and several other times, where with the movement from 10 to 14 staff on the fire department, with the budget overrides, we fully expected that we'd have 24/7 staffing at the West Falmouth Fire Station. It's not happening. We look at the public safety of the West Falmouth Fire Station quite a bit like I do with the emergency room at the hospital. If a few nurses showed up, failed to show up, and the emergency room closed, that would be quite a disaster. And when the West Falmouth Fire Station is closed because some number of firefighters failed to show up one day, I believe, and the community believes, that the fire department has an obligation to manage its staff, reallocate resources, and keep all five fire stations operating. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
Barbara Schneider, Chair, Beach Committee, and I was, would like to tell, give you an update on the parking attendant huts that we've been working on for a lot of months. Two of them are in place, one at Old Silver Beach Public Area and one at Surf Drive. They are, the, they're a little different than the design we showed you originally. We were actually having to remove the curvature that made the front wave look because of both cost and the difficulty of finding a place that could provide those in any amount of time. It was an extremely costly measure. We have made some changes where we think that the remaining ones that will be built will be built to a much smaller scale than those two, so that we don't lose parking space sizes. And I have brought those new designs for you. They will be, in, two of them would be in place sometime between now and the middle of the summer. The remainder of them, we'd be looking at, talking about that for town, at the next town meeting, and having them built in the winter. So they're much more substantial when you see the old ones and you see how small they were and how uncomfortable for the people to work in and sit in. Most of people brought chairs and sat outside of them and didn't sit in them at all. So this will be a much better situation, and I hope that you'll be glad with the end result.
And I just wanted to enter these. So that you have this. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Bosnowski, and then Ms. Harlow-Hawks will get, go to you as well.
Good evening, Dave Bosnowski, President of Falmouth Heights, Merivis, and Neighborhood Association. I'm here to just make a comment about my favorite subject these days is South Coast Wind. And I'm inspired by the articles I saw in the paper where Mr. Brown was quoted, that he's taking the initiative at the select board's encouragement to keep the dialogue open with, with Mayflower, sorry, South Coast, and to bring some, or enlighten us on what's actually happening. I wrote the select board back in April in response to their lawyers having updated the EFSP that the, that South Coast was engaged with Falmouth and the community members. And I had asked the select board, you know, is the town actually engaged? And Mr. Johnson Staub was kind enough to reply and gave me a brief synopsis as to what had transpired since the beginning, and summarized it by saying that the select board had not yet taken a position to support or oppose the project, and neither the staff nor select board was actively engaged in negotiations with South Coast at the moment. There's, there's an awful lot happening with, with South Coast. It's, it's not, it is progressing, but by the same token, it stalled on many fronts. The Massachusetts EFSP application still hasn't been refiled. The Rhode Island EFSP, there's a show cause hearing that's coming up on June 12th in Rhode Island, where the EFSP in Rhode Island has called South Coast to explain and provide details on the economic, financial viability of the project. The BOEM Draft Environmental Impact Study has been released and discussed at various Zoom meetings, public Zoom meetings. I think the BOEM has yet to respond with any amendments that have been made. The ISO New England?
You're getting to your time, it's 2:09.
Okay, let me just say that the bottom line is that there, there is a lot, a lot of things ongoing with South Coast, and I think we'd like to be apprised of what's going on, as, as I know the select board would. And let me also just conclude by saying that as far as Falmouth Heights, Merivis, and Neighborhood Association is concerned, our position has not changed on this matter either. We maintain our opposition to these cables going through our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harlow-Hawks?
Good evening, Maury Harlow-Hawks, 9 Old Dock Road. First, I want to say how excited it was to see the newspaper, that we had so many volunteers in this town, because usually committees are empty, and tonight it was really heartwarming to see how many people have stepped up to do a lot of really good work for nothing, as, you know, volunteers in this town. That said, I'm not going to add too much to Mr. Ford's discussion on the fire station, and I just am really looking forward to the new town administrator, hopefully kind of getting to the bottom of some of the issues we have with the fire department so that we can move forward and protect everybody in town. And with the new Hatchville Station, it will be really important that we get staffing nailed down before it opens, if we're already closing a station with two Prop 2 and 1/2 overrides. And that being said, I know you're all aware of it, but I thank you for all your efforts, and the chief will have a lot of conversation, I'm sure, with the new town manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will move into our hearings.
Madam Chair, I've noticed hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws, as amended, that Pepicorn Restaurant, Inc. has applied for a transfer of all alcoholic beverage restaurant license located by Pepicorn, Inc. at 285 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. An application for a common particular license has also been submitted. Hearing on, the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, Monday, June 5, 2023, at 6:45. Comments may be made, sent to SelectBoard@falmouthmass.gov. We're order the Select Board.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the location most recently operated as Chivrix Cafe. The application has been reviewed by staff and is complete. As is typically the case, there are two items that will need to be addressed after Select Board approval but prior to issuance of the license, and those are the Certificate of Inspection from the Building Department Inspection from the Building Department and the Food Service Permit by the Health Department. I recommend approval of the transfer conditioned on the approval of the Certificate of Inspection and the Food Service Permit.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. Are you here representing the applicant?
Yes, Ted Schelling, attorney from Osterville. And I have Charles Willers with me, who is the manager of Peppercorn Restaurant LLC, as well as the chef. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions from the board?
I have a question about the process. We just recently approved a entertainment license for this location. Does that carry with the transfer?
It does, yes.
Okay, same conditions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Bosnowski?
Your client looks like he's surprised by that.
I just, I wasn't planning on utilizing an entertainment license.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
I don't know, the application seemed complete.
Okay, let's open it to the public. Any comments about this application? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Conversation amongst the board.
I'd move approval under the condition of the Certificate of Inspection and the Food Service Permit. Is that language okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
One, one question for the applicant. You're going to be serving liquor. Who would be the liquor license holder and the manager?
We close the hearing.
Oh, sorry, never mind.
Do you want me to, do you want to vote to reopen the hearing?
I just forgot to ask that question, so I would like to, yes, please.
Okay, I'll take a motion to reopen the hearing.
I'll make it.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to reopen the hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. Would you be the actual manager in charge of the liquor license and overseeing the serving of the patrons?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, so moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board about the application.
It just seems to be all in order. I don't have any problem with it. I would move approval unless anyone else has a concern.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Good luck with the new job.
Thank you, good luck.
You got a fine restaurant on Main Street.
Okay, great.
Yes, we will go on to our second hearing.
Notice hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws has mentioned that RGMD Corp. doing business as Restorante Abelino has applied for a transfer of all alcoholic beverage restaurant license located at 339 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. An application for a common vicula license has also been submitted. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 6:45. Comments may be sent to SelectBoard@FalmouthMass.gov. Per Select Board.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the location most recently operated as Josh is at Davisville. The application has been reviewed by staff and is complete. I recommend approval of the transfer conditioned on approval of the Certificate of Inspection and the Food Service Permit.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. You're here as the applicant?
I am, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board of the applicant?
I don't have a question, just a comment.
Please.
Tough act to follow. Josh's was pretty popular. Your food's going to have to be really good.
Agreed.
Okay, any comments from the public on this application? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the, the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd move approval under the condition of the certification of inspection and a food service permit.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into the business section of our meeting, and I just want to make one point here, and that is that business number two, acting as the trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, that item has been deferred at the request of Mr. Galasso. Okay, so we will move to business number one. Affirm the police chief appointment. You only have five minutes, Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, we conducted an extensive recruitment and selection process to select the next chief of the Falmouth Police Department, which is detailed in a memo in your packet. We were fortunate to have several well-qualified applicants for police chief. Five finalists were interviewed by citizen panels and subsequently evaluated by a panel of three police chiefs retained by our consultant for this recruitment process. The consultant conducted a full-day structured evaluation process known as an assessment center. The three evaluators unanimously rated Jeffrey Lory as the top-ranked candidate. This evaluation of three police chiefs was a significant factor in my decision, but it was also important for me to conduct a thorough reference check to evaluate the actual experience of the finalists. Mr. Lory has approximately 10 years of experience as a police chief, holds a master's degree in criminal justice, and a passion for police work and community service. The references confirmed that Mr. Lory has been effective in leading community policing and has improved morale within the Uxbridge and Westboro Police Departments where he has served as chief. He is highly regarded by all three town managers to whom he reported. He has been a strong advocate for the police department while also accepting the budget decisions of the town manager and the Select Board. In Westboro, he has implemented body cameras, embedded social workers within the police department, and under his guidance, Westboro is among the leaders in the Commonwealth in achieving state accreditation for the police department. He has demonstrated success with hiring in Westboro despite recruitment challenges faced by all police departments in recent years. In conclusion, I'm confident Chief Lory is the best choice among several well-qualified candidates and will be an effective leader of the Falmouth Police Department. I respectfully ask the Select Board to approve my appointment of Jeffrey Lory as chief of police for the town of Falmouth. And I would note that we are not seeking an exemption to the residency requirement. Mr. Lory plans to reside in Falmouth.
Okay, and is Mr. Lory here?
He certainly is.
Step right up.
Forty-three seconds, I'll be quick.
Thirty.
My wife, Carol and I, who's here with me tonight, we're really looking forward to relocating to Falmouth. I'd like to thank you all for this awesome opportunity. My promise to the Falmouth community, as well as the men and women who serve on our police department, I will advocate tirelessly for the needs of the agency and community. I want you all to know that we will continue to honor past traditions as we create new ones together. Falmouth PD is a professional organization, and as a team, we will work collaboratively to enhance the services we provide to those we are entrusted to serve. There is no greater honor than that of public service, helping and protecting others, and I look forward to leading mentoring staff for their career growth and working with all of you in service to Falmouth and our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Any questions or comments for our new chief?
Madam Chair, I'd move we affirm the police chief appointment.
Okay, I have a motion.
I would second with the comment that I, I'm kind of sad that we are not able to hire from within today, and I know Mr. Lory has scored a high and is apparently the best candidate for the job, but just want to voice my sadness that it didn't work out for our, our own force from within to be able to appoint from within, and I'm just a little sad about it, but I hope Mr. Lory can do the job that we think he can do.
Madam Chair, I would agree with Mr. Brown. Our department has been holding it down for a long time under some arduous conditions, and I would just ask Mr. Lory to, to recognize that and to take care of our good police officers in that department and treat them well.
I will, sir.
And I absolutely would echo your sentiments and the sentiments of Mr. Zelinski, and yes, you will take very good care of our officers.
Well, with that, I have made a second, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to affirm the police chief appointment. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. All right, we will move on to the annual report from our Conservation Commission.
Welcome, Mrs. Lory. Both Mrs. Lawries, I suspect.
Twenty seconds.
Two minutes and 20 seconds. You are, you are slated for 15 minutes.
What? Biggest show of the night.
Very generous.
Johnson Staub, I'd appreciate your guidance. Oh, maybe I got it.
Do you want us to hold the clock?
Doug says no.
I won't look.
No, it's, the password is right there. It's not a secret.
My grandson's not here to help me.
And your presentation should be. Did you send it to Daniel?
It's supposed to be in there.
She's usually really good, I don't know, I don't, I don't see it.
Just tell us what you did.
You're already at four minutes.
You're done. The clock starts now, no worries. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Jamie Matthews, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. Thank you for having me. On behalf of my colleagues, I offer you this report. So there's no pretty slides, so.
We do have them.
We have them. What did I say?
We, we have them on our computers.
You have it? Okay. So our goal, of course, is to protect and regulate the lands under our jurisdiction through the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Falmouth Wetlands Bylaw. We also serve as stewards to the town's conservation lands. Our staff, we have, of course, Mrs. Lincoln, our administrator, Mr. Casperzic, our Conservation Land Management, and M.E.S.Tech, Alyssa Bergeron, our agent, who just recently received her master's degree, Emma Brooks, our part-time agent, Lori Brown, our administrative assistant, Kristen Pattonow, our recording secretary, and the Towns Help, Justin Shanahan, our IT advisor. These professionals keep the process running smoothly, making us as efficient as possible while meeting all the regulatory guidelines. They also work closely with and are instrumental in guiding the applicants through the process to assure a positive outcome. The agents spend countless hours reviewing the applications, conducting site visits, and communicating with the applicants, all in the interest of determining which application, I'm sorry, which regulations apply to a specific application, and how to help the applicants achieve a positive order of conditions. After reviewing an application, the agents will generate a staff report. This report is shared with, with the board members and the applicants in the interest of informing everybody, allowing the applicants to address any concerns prior to the hearing. So who serves you? Myself as chair, Courtney Bird is the vice chair, Maury Harlow Hawks, Betsy Gladfelter, Steve Patton, Kevin O'Brien, Melissa Freitag. We're fortunate, Falmouth, have volunteers, have the volunteers we have. These dedicated individuals bring much to the table. This board shows much diversity. We have a scientist, an educator, policymaker, an engineer, septic and landscape contractor, and a couple of building contractors, all longtime residents and some business owners. And we have a couple of openings for anybody interested, just to say it. So what do we do this year? Held meetings. We meet every Wednesday night with a few exceptions and occasionally additional times to, as necessary, to meet the regulatory deadlines. Our meetings are, are to hold public hearings on various applications brought before us, where we apply the regulations of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Falmouth Wetlands Bylaw. This year, we held over 265 hearings for notices of intent, requests for determination of applicability, amended orders, and unfortunately, some enforcement orders. So, this year, this fiscal year, we had over 34 meetings, averaging three hours each. We maintain an average commissioner attendance over 90%. We've always had a quorum. This is a true testament to the dedication of your voluntary members. Old joke here, Mr. Brown, we maintain a 96.4% approval rating. Does that mean 96% of the people like us? But it means the applicants, 96% of the applicants receive a favorable order of conditions. It's important to note that in addition to the actual meetings, your volunteer members spend an average four hours a week preparing for these meetings, including a comprehensive review of all the relevant paperwork and plans, then conducting the site visits necessary to acclimate themselves to the conditions present, all in the interest of making an informed decision. This pile of paperwork is only from one meeting two weeks ago, just so you know. And it all has to be reviewed. Falmouth is fortunate, we have a vast amount of wetland resources, including ponds, rivers, and other freshwater wetlands. We also have over 95 miles of saltwater shoreline. Falmouth has 169 parcels of conservation-restricted land encompassing over 2,193 acres, all of which falls under the watchful eye of Mark Casperzic. There's a lot of restoration projects going on in town, just another step in increasing resiliency to climate change through ecological restoration and promoting stewardship of our natural environment through collaboration. These restoration projects could not be accomplished without the perseverance of a myriad of volunteers and the help of other town departments and state agencies. I wish you could, while you have the pictures, all the volunteers, we have different private companies that, that donate their services, AmeriCorps, the schools, so we thank all of them. And of course, all the town departments that help us out, the Department of Public Works, Marine Environmental Services, GIS, Town Council, the Building Department, Health, zoning, everybody, we're grateful for the, for the backing. I would like to thank my colleagues, I'm sorry, my colleague, Betsy, for helping me with this report, and by helping, I mean she let me look over her shoulder. I'd like to thank my esteemed colleagues for their patience and perseverance. This year was another of long meetings, much debate, and some difficult decisions. Thank you guys for your hard work and dedication. Thank you to our staff for keeping us in line, informed, and efficient. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of the town of Falmouth and to protect its resources. We value your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Thank you for your work. Mr. Brown?
I do have a question. How the heck do you manage all these acres of, how do you manage all these acres of conservation land? Is it the 300 committee volunteers that help, or?
I'm sorry.
How do you manage the large, vast amount of conservation land that we have? I know it's under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, but who actually gets out there and, and looks at it?
How do we manage it?
Yeah. Mark has to do all that?
Mark gets lots of all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mark, that's mostly what Mark does is, is manage that, coordinates that.
Mark Casperzic.
Right, Mark Casperzic. So he's an active volunteer recruiter.
Phenomenal job, too. I mean, you've seen some of the, the properties, so.
Okay, I was wondering how they could manage all that, so there is volunteer activity there. Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just curious.
Mr. Ms. Gally?
Thank you. Just curious about the enforcements that you had this, this year. Could you just give us a little bit of a, what, what that would entail?
I mean, you have some every year. You have, you know, people that do work without permitting. There's, there's, there's a lot of people, we find a lot of. There's a lot of people, we find a lot of, like, landscape contractors that don't understand, you know, any permits. And, of course, whose responsibility is it? You know, it's the landowner, but oftentimes, they'll rely on their contractor. And a lot of contractors, you know, you don't realize they'll need permitting and/or... There's a lot of, you know, vernal pools, for example. You know, a lot of people don't realize they're in a restricted area there. So all we try to do is work with people to get it cleaned up and taken care of.
They're mostly just negligence or just not knowing, not willful?
Not intentional, I mean...
Not intentional, for the most part.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, a lot of people don't realize they're in a resource area. And, of course, a lot of people, you know, they rely on the contractor to get whatever necessary permits, and, you know, a lot of contractors will assume the, you know, homeowner got a permit. That's something we're working on. We're trying to, you know, find a way to make that more public so people know what regulations apply to them and where, like contractors. Not to throw them under the bus, I don't mean that, but a lot of them don't understand what the process is. Sometimes the process is simple, we just need to know.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Just have a comment that...
Mr. Brown?
I found that, as a contractor, that the Conservation Commission and staff have been very easy to work with of late, where years ago, people were like, oh, no, don't tell them what you're doing, don't go to the Conservation Commission because it's going to be a nightmare. But it's really not. You know, they're willing to work with you if you go down there and let them know what your plans are, and if it's a reasonable plan, then I found it to be pretty user-friendly.
And they have a job to do.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's a big job.
Okay. Presentation and vote to send letter to EPA regarding the machine gun range at Joint Base Cape Cod, five minutes, Rosemary? Where did she go? I thought maybe you left.
Madam Chair, did we skip over the grant from against it?
No, he deferred.
Oh, okay.
I kind of announced that ahead of time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, while she's getting ready, I just have a few brief comments. The United States Environmental Protection Agency issued a draft determination that the multipurpose machine gun range proposed by the Massachusetts Army National Guard may contaminate the Cape Cod aquifer. If this determination is confirmed, the project will not be eligible for federal funding. The EPA is accepting comments through June 26th. And in your packet is a letter that was sent by the Barnstable County Commissioners in opposition to the machine gun range, as well as a release issued by the EPA when it issued its draft determination.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in slideshow, but anyway. Hi, my name is Rosemary Carey, Precinct Five. I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board to submit a letter of public comment to the EPA Region One Administrator, expressing your acknowledgement of the EPA's sole source aquifer project review and your opposition to the project. Okay, to give some context, I'm trying to get the slide. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Just to give some context, the Mass... Army National Guard proposes to build an eight-lane machine gun training range on Camp Edwards Training Area at Joint Base Cape Cod. Camp Edwards abouts Falmouth, Mashpee, Bourne, and Sandwich and sits atop our sole source aquifer. The public first learned... I'm sorry. Public first heard of this project in 2020 from a small ad in the Cape Cod Times, and since then, public awareness and opposition has only grown, particularly from the towns of Falmouth and our upper Cape neighbors. The reasons for the opposition have been risks to our water, habitat disturbance, loss of trees, social and economic concerns, and environmental justice concerns. In July 2021, the EPA began a study to assess the potential risk to our water, as the project would sit atop the Cape Cod's sole source aquifer, which is protected under the Safe Drinking Water Act. That exhaustive study was received, released in April 2023, and is now under a sixty-day public comment period until June 26th. The conclusion of the... the overarching conclusion of the review is that the project may contaminate the Cape Cod aquifer. They're creating a significant public health hazard. This confirmed what the public has been saying for more than two years. So in your packet, as Mr. Johnson Staub said, is a letter to Dr. Cash, which I have here and I'll read, "In light of the U.S. EPA's Region One Sole Source Aquifer Project Review at Joint Base Cape Cod, which finds that the project may create a significant public health hazard, the Falmouth Massachusetts Select Board unanimously recommends that this project be rejected."
We do have this in our packets.
Okay.
The letter.
So, all right, I will... Okay.
I mean, you can read it if you want it in the record, Rosemary, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that we do have it.
Okay, I'll just read. Groundwater from the Sagmore lens provides approximately three million gallons of drinking water per day to community public water supply systems in the towns of Sandwich, Bourne, Mashpee, Yarmouth, Barnstable, and the Mashpee-Wampenog Tribe. Let's skip the rest of the letter, and this Falmouth Select Board respects and honors the critical role of the Massachusetts Army National Guard in protecting our citizens and keeping our communities safe. This decision in no way impedes our desire to remain partners for the protection of our community, our water, and our natural resources. Respectfully submitted, the Falmouth Select Board. So after reviewing the letter, I hope that you do approve it unanimously, given the importance of, the critical importance of water quality and our past history with water contamination, exposing our community to any further risk is just unacceptable. If you do approve the letter and send the letter with your modifications as you deem fit, you'd be in very good company. Our federal delegation, Senator Warren Imarkey, Representative Keating; state delegation, Senator Sumurran, Rep. Dylan Fernandez; Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates; Mashpee Select Board and the Wampenog Tribe have already come out against this, as has a coalition of nonprofits and grassroots groups up and down the... groups up and down the Cape, including several in Falmouth, who have come out adamantly opposed to this project. So the comments need to be sent by email to this address, r1ssacomments@epa.gov, by June 26th, and I respectfully request that you do make one.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Carey?
I have a question, if I may.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Zelinski?
Can you explain the social and economic concerns with regard to this?
Yes. Well, tourism, our tourist economy is based on our water, our oceans, our drinking water, and so on. So, number one, any risk to our water would put our economy in jeopardy. Also, other concerns socio-economic would be noise, traffic, risks from construction. That also would put local businesses and residents behind.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
I have a comment that, actually, this project, you know, the hundred and seventy acres is the full project, but there's also two phases to it. And the first phase only strips about eighty acres of land, and it doesn't prepare the range for long-range, like sniper training, but it does provide adequate facility for machine gun training for, like, fifty caliber and other. So I wouldn't like to just reject it in its entirety, but what I would like to do is not really change the language, but except that the part where it says, "This project would require clear cutting of one hundred and seventy acres," and I'd like to amend that to say, "This project in its entirety would require clear cutting of one hundred and seventy acres." And I'd like the board to consider language at the end saying, "We propose that the Army redesign and scale back this project to more adequately address the environmental concerns that have been raised." I don't want to completely shut the door on them having an opportunity to do their mission, so that's just my position. I don't know if you guys want to support it, but I'd like to see...
Coming from a machine gunner in the military...
Mr. Zelinski?
Coming from a machine gunner in the military, I understand that we need to be trained and we need places to train, and I'm uncomfortable with the fact that this may. It says, "If it may." We're sending... we're affirming someone's belief that it may. I would like to have the information where it comes back that says it will, or they suspect it will, because that'll take care of itself. If it's deemed that it does and the testing comes back, they're not going to fund it.
Right.
Where are our guys going to train?
I am vehemently opposed to this because it is on our sole source aquifer. I think if there's even a question that it may contaminate, I say we send the letter forward as written. I think about what we got into years ago. I believe it was the Schumett Valley, and we got into a lot of water issues. I'm just not willing, if there is a chance that we could contaminate our water, which is vital to life, I just can't support that.
I have not admittedly read the whole report yet, but I believe in following the science, and I support the work that the EPA does, and so if they're raising cause for concern, I would support their concern.
If I may...
Mr. Muscoli?
Yeah. Would it be better if we just issued what our concerns were? As, you know, I think you could keep the entire letter, but rather than taking a position to Mr. Zelinski's point, raising what our concerns are and strong concerns, but not necessarily taking a position in light of the fact that it is a... may contaminate. Just throwing it out there as a possible wordsmithing...
At least an alternative, another place where they could... I'm not necessarily on this site, but somewhere in the region that would take the place of this would satisfy some of my concerns about it.
It seems like it's not yet conclusive. I mean, I understand that they're raising a concern, but to say that it may, I mean, we knew that two years ago, that it may. We know it might be a problem, but is it a problem? Will it be a problem? Many environmental people that I've spoken to, not just civil advocates, but scientific people, don't really think it is that much of a concern, and we're more concerned with the propellants than the actual bullets. And if they would modify their plans, as I had suggested previously, maybe there's a containment area to better contain the propellants. I don't know. I'm just... I just don't want to completely shut the door on the military being able to function at that site.
Mr. Muscoli?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think it's... I think it's a problem. I think it can very well be a problem. What I'm suggesting is we may be able to say the same concerns by just saying those are our very strong concerns going forward, and then, you know, then they'll have us on record as, you know, what our objections are, without necessarily taking that ultimate decision that it is be rejected.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask Mr. Muscoli if I'm understanding your proposal, we would essentially, or the board could potentially take the draft letter and remove the phrase, "The Falmouth Select Board unanimously recommends that this project be rejected," and essentially replace it with the phrase more along the lines of, "The Select Board echoes these concerns," or wants to be on the record with these concerns? Is that the type of position that...
I appreciate it, Mr. Johnson Staub. I'd almost go to the first paragraph where it says unanimously recommends the project be rejected, something to the effect that the Select Board wants the EPA or the EPA to be aware that these are very strong concerns that we would register, that...
The other comment that I wanted to offer, Madam Chair, if I could...
Please.
Is, it is, you know, I think the language of the draft determination is confusing in its use of the word "may." And what I mean by that is just that my understanding is this is sort of the end of the analysis in terms of the EPA's position as to whether there should be federal funding. And essentially, what they're saying is that they've done all of this study, and the conclusion is that if the project were to go forward, it may contaminate, and there isn't necessarily, I don't think, more analysis that can be done before the project is put in place to determine whether or not there is contamination. And that's the dilemma for everybody, I think, for this board and for the federal government as well.
So the question is, are you willing to take the risk?
Okay, and for me, given what Falmouth has gone through previously with water, I am not. I don't want to wait until they build this and they come back and say, "Yeah, it did contaminate." I...
Madam Chair, if I may.
Ms. Scott Price?
Maybe what we could write is, "The Select Board, it might not be unanimous, recommends that this project be rejected as proposed," because to Mr. Brown's point, maybe there is something else that they'll look at, maybe they will look at scaling back, and it won't have so much of an effect on the aquifer. So I think if we say "as proposed," that says what the EPA has looked at, the research that they have done, we don't support that. And then who knows what happens in the future if they do, you know, more work and they do another proposal, and there's more research that's done, you know, we could look at it again. But I'm with Nancy, excuse me, I'm with Chair Taylor. I would not... I would support this letter in some form.
I would support it certainly in some form. I would just like to give a little bit of hint that maybe if they scale it back and be a little more conservative, maybe there's still hope, but...
But so that they... are you saying move the project, or that there'll be some contamination, but less? That's where I'm stuck. I'm very stuck on what the explanation that Mr. Johnson Staub just got, that we won't know, it may contaminate, and we won't know until it's built. And I, frankly, I am not willing to put my name to something that may contaminate our sole source aquifer, whether it's one size or a smaller size. I just... I can't do that. Mr. Muscoli?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mr. Johnson Staub said. I mean, I think the way it's worded, especially where they throw this comma in, thereby, if you went back to your first slide there, it says "may contaminate, thereby." It's questionable, exactly in my mind, what they're actually saying, where it's going to come from. That being said, I appreciate the Chair's position that if there's the slightest possibility that there may be some contamination, that we should probably express that we would not go, we would reject it.
And if the EPA, to echo what Ms. Scott Price said, if the EPA is saying that it may, that's enough for me. That's just how I see it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to take comments from the public, but Dr. Gladfelter was looking to be recognized.
Of course. Please.
Oh, Betsy Gladfelter. I don't believe any of you were... I mean, I'm pretty sure none of you were on the board a while back when the new water plant was being built, but there was a problem, and it was a gun range, and it was just to the south of where the new water plant was done. There was a gravel pit, and people were shooting into that, and part of that, part of the doing the new water plant was a very expensive cleanup of that gun range. of that gun range. And so, you know, I think this question, I mean, I don't know what contaminant bullets, these bullets have, but at least in that case, the town would have been on the hook for a big cleanup, but it could be, it was incorporated into the water plant project. And so to get to your question, well, what happens if you decide you do need to clean it up? Then are we going to have, and of course, I'm most familiar with the Kunemesset and what happened in the 1990s where pollutants were found and then there had to be a major cleanup. The problem is this kind of, this kind of a range could be other areas and it wouldn't necessarily be contaminating a water supply like we have here. Basically, we have, at least this upper part of the Cape has one, a single lens. So.
And the range is right on top of it.
Right.
There's other land on that base that might be suitable. So that's why I'm encouraging them to scale back or redesign their project.
That's why I think adding in, sorry, Madam Chair, if I may, adding in as proposed to the language signifies that the way that it is written now is not supported and that leaves it open to.
And in its entirety, because they don't really need to do both. When I did the tour, I talked to the, I don't know if he was a Colonel, but he was the guy that was leading the tour, and he said, it's likely that the one hundred and seventy acres would never get done anyways because all they really need is the first portion of it, the eighty acres, to get their guys working and not have to travel to Vermont. So, I mean, it's a significant impact when it's the full project. But if they could scale it back and maybe relocate a portion of it or do some more mitigation, I just don't want to completely slam the door the way the language is in this, that they could come back and redesign their project. I think you have another public comment if you're interested.
Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Grand Ave, to address Ms. Gladfelter's concern. That was the cleanup of lead bullets. These bullets are not lead, they're copper jacketed. Our drinking water comes in copper pipes. I think this report is pretty thin rule. They're supposed to be scientists and they can't even put their finger on what it be. It may cause damage or pollution. I don't see how copper bullets are going to cause that. I went to the Colonel Powers' presentation at the base. The biggest concern would be the propellants. And they put mats in the area where the weapons are fired, which catches, ninety-nine-plus percent of the stuff burns off, but it catches any residual. I mean, again, may cause, I mean, these people are scientists. They have already dug all the bullets out of there. I don't know how many tons of lead that they recovered, but as I said, these munitions aren't lead anymore. I don't see what damage copper is going to do to the environment. If there was any, I think they would have been more specific. And another thing I remember from the presentation is when these bullets are in the ground and they do make efforts to recover all of them, it, the copper travels less than a foot, as I recall the man saying. And like I said, I mean, may cause, that's pretty thin rule for supposed scientists. After this, I put the EPA right up there with the FBI and the CDC and the NIH.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Mr. Zelensky?
You know, the good doctor's presentation a minute ago struck something with me. We spend a ton of money in the military and we only have one shot to do this right. You know, if it happens and we're wrong, in this instance, Doug, you know, they're going to a ton of other places that they can spend that money and train. I've had a change of heart, given the fact that we only have one aquifer. There's multiple places we can set this up and urge them to do so. So this isn't a hill I want to die on making my point. So if they're looking for a unanimous vote and I'm the one holding this up, I'm not willing to be the dissenting vote that, I don't want to be the guy that they said was wrong on this because I'm not sure. If they're not sure, how can I be sure?
Well, I don't want to, if I could, I don't want to stop the letter either. I'd just like to just make it clear that, a couple of points that.
But maybe it's up to them to figure that out. If we reject it in full, it's up to them to figure out where else they can put it. I would assume, and I'm just thinking this through, I would assume that they would come back if they get this type of feedback and they would come back and have some other place that isn't on the sole source aquifer. But from my perspective, that's up to them. I think it's up to us to protect our water and not take that chance of may.
I don't argue that.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying, but I just think it's up to them to come back.
Just asking for a couple of modifications to the letter, not to deny sending it.
Did you have a comment?
I don't know, I feel.
You have to come up to the podium and introduce yourself, please?
This is me, I'm listening to. And I guess I was so thrilled with Mr. Zelensky's first comments and now I'm all turned inside out. Because I guess I agree with the last speaker. We just celebrated Memorial Day. Actually, my husband was lucky enough to speak at a service for Memorial Day. He was a Navy pilot. He was one of those that was going to be drafted, so he enlisted during Vietnam. And after he spoke, he, during a speech, he talked about the recent air disasters by our young pilots in training, in particular two helicopters in New York that had a head-on collision. And he said from his years of service, many, he wanted the public to understand those accidents are not something we long for, but it's something we have to understand because the military has different standards than we do, that in order to be combat-ready, they have to produce real situations. They have to really understand it's them or the enemy. So for us to not, maybe consider Mr. Brown's suggestion, scale it down as a completely outward rejection, is not such a bad idea. I think most of us know, a lot of the military bases around the East Coast have been closed. And another point, if you've been paying attention to the news, this goes back sadly or not, to windmills. Pilots, submarines, they are having problems with the whole concept of windmills on the East Coast. And they've actually come out, there's a lot of material written here. My husband was actually flying helicopters, he did many different kinds of planes, but the helicopters were in search of Russian subs. And interestingly enough, he flew out of Weymouth many, many, many times. Our coast too is often in danger and continues to be in danger today. And we never even knew this until several months ago, when reports came out by the military that the sounds of windmills and cables that are screwing our poor whales and dolphins because they can't find their directions, sonobu, they find the same sound.
Could we please, could we please stick to what's on our agenda?
So, I am sticking to this topic. I think that when we deny readiness by our military, it can threaten us. Read, maybe this project is too large, but to just come out with a complete rejection, I'm asking maybe the committee could consider Mr. Brown's idea. Not a complete rejection, not maybe a, everybody agrees, but maybe a scaling down, because may is, the word may is disturbing because we're hearing it with a lot of projects today in our country. And everybody says follow the science, but when you really ask for the science, we're not seeing it as clearly written as perhaps we would prefer to have it. But that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Yes.
Jim Gray again. It seems to me that the word "may" is the key piece. And if you flip the question around and require the FAA to unequivocally confirm that there would be no harm to our water, we'd be fully supportive of the item. So in the wording, and this is purely wordsmithing, but if instead of using the word "may," they concluded that there's no potential for harm to our water supply, we wouldn't be having the discussion, I don't believe, based on everything that's been said. So in the letter, if you want to modify it in a way in which you put the onus back on the EPA and back onto the military, force them to unequivocally tell us that there would be no harm to our water supply.
Well, they can't.
They can't. And there won't be any more testing, is what I heard you say. They've done what they can do. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, that this is, this is the completion of their analysis for the proposal. If the proposal were to be approved, I think there would be ongoing review and regulation.
And we're adding ourselves to a long, long list of people that have already.
Yes.
You know, it's not, it's not our say, it's, we're just either lending support unanimously or we're not.
Or we're not.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Mascali?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the release from the EPA, it also goes on to say, however, the risk of irreparable damage to the only drinking water source on Cape Cod is too significant. I think that maybe the letter should make more of that being our prime concern, that without, without proof or evidence that there is no damage, following what the gentleman just said before, that we must deny it at this stage because, because there is the possibility of that damage at this point. I think the letter should have something in there that that's what our concern is, our main concern is.
Thank you, Mr. Mascali.
This, Gary was.
Come up, please.
I would just like to say that the report, sorry, also notes that more than $10 billion have been spent on cleaning up water contamination and it's not complete yet. And there are chemicals of concern, including copper, which is related to a human health effect. That's also noted in the study. And under the Safe Drinking Water Act, they are looking, they're taking a preventative measure. And so saying that this may pose a risk to our water is perfectly within their jurisdiction and it makes perfect sense because it costs too much to repair and clean up contaminated water. So the job is to prevent it, to prevent any new risk to the sole source aquifer.
Well, certainly, but comparatively, I think the risk of this is certainly much less than the jet fuel that they used to get dumped as the planes were landing, which is the big plume that's one problem. And then the firefighting training academy, which wasn't even a military activity, that's the biggest cause of pollution out there. So certainly there are significant problems, but it's not because of this firing range.
I still think adding in this project be rejected as proposed.
In its entirety.
As proposed in its entirety gets to, I think, Mr. Brown's point and, I guess the point across.
And I would hope at the end we could say, where we're saying that this decision in no way impedes our desire to remain partners in our community with the protection of our community, our water and natural resources, we encourage the National Guard to scale back, relocate, or modify this project to be such that the EPA can assure that it won't be a problem, or some language to that effect.
You know, we're running in, more and more, we're running into ultimatums, which are all or nothing. So there is no, you know, in this instance, there is some collaboration or some adjustment to our concerns. I get that.
I mean, I don't see the harm in just.
I don't understand why it has to be a unanimous, you know.
Total rejection, right?
Yeah, so, well, I'm just saying, I, you heard what I just said, how I feel about it. But, you know, I'm uncomfortable with people writing letters for this board and then sending it in when you don't have a general consensus across the board at the same level and someone else writes the letter for us. I'm uncomfortable with that. So I think it's 100% appropriate to be able to describe the concerns, you know. And again, if it was just our decision, it would be more monumental of a decision.
I mean, that's, those are the two modifications I'm asking for. If you want me to say exactly what they would be, I would say that this Select Board unanimously recommends that this project be rejected, or, let's see, which finds that the project as proposed in its entirety may create a significant public health hazard. And then at the end, I'd just like to say that we recommend that they scale back, modify, or relocate the project. That's my, I would like to make a motion that we include that language, just.
I would be willing to do the first piece and I don't think it's our place to make recommendations. I think it's their place to figure that out. So I would, I would consider the first part, but I wouldn't consider the second part.
I think that the last section of this is kind of hollow and we don't indicate what it is that we're looking for. This decision in no way impedes our desire to remain partners in the communicate, community for the protection of our community, our water and natural resources.
Let me just take that sentence out.
Well, because they're trying to, trying to be polite and say that we still appreciate the National Guard. So, I mean, I don't really want to take it out, but it's funny to say we encourage them to modify, scale back, or relocate. I mean, I don't see, what's the harm in that? Because we're encouraging them to continue to try? Is that why you think it's not good?
So, Madam Chair, we have a meeting on June 26th, right? The comments are due June 26th. I don't know at what time they're due. Would it be worthwhile for Mr. Johnson Staub to maybe take another crack at a draft that incorporates some of the things that we're mentioning and have it on the agenda for the 26th? And if we're in agreement, we get it out on that day?
I don't think so.
But it wasn't his letter initially.
I don't think.
No, I realize it was. No.
I think the other thing is, you know, there's been a lot of conversation around this and if we add your sentence, then we're, we are supporting the gun range in a different place, correct?
We're supporting the concept, but.
Okay, well, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is we've had a community forum and we had some real, you know, opposition and to the gun range at all. So I guess, so I guess that's where.
A lot of support, a lot of support too.
We did, but not, it was not unanimous in any way, shape, or form on either side.
Right.
So I just, I feel like the issue here is it's on the aquifer, it may pollute our water, and I think that's what the issue is. And I think, I don't know.
I'm only asking to add a couple of, a couple of lines to a letter that somebody else is asking us to support, so.
Can we take the two modifications as separate motions?
I would think so. Yeah, you can split them up.
Okay, well, I move that we add language to the beginning of this. It says, in light of the EPA, US EPA's Region One Sole Source Aquifer Project Review of the Multipurpose Machine Gun Range at Joyce Bay, Cape Cod, which finds that the project may create a significant public health hazard, which, I'm going to change that to, which finds that the project as proposed in its entirety. Those are the few words that I would add.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend that first paragraph. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Was that a three to two vote? Bob?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the second amendment?
At the bottom where it says this decision in no way impedes our desire to remain partners in our community for the protection of our community, our water and nat- in our community for the protection of our community, our water and nat..." Wait a minute, this doesn't seem to make sense. "This decision in no way impedes our desire to remain partners in our community for the protection of our community, our water and natural resources."
What did you want to add to that?
We encouraged, I don't know if that language is actually grammatically correct, but regardless...
I think it is.
Okay, then I...
Yeah, it just reads weird.
Yeah, it does read weird, but it is, it is okay.
All right, then, I would add that we encourage the National Guard to modify, scale back, or relocate this project.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, we have some...
Guys on the vine.
We have those? We have no second, the motion fails.
All right.
Okay, so, it looks like the board voted three to two to add language to the first paragraph.
Do we need to vote on the whole thing?
We need to vote with the amended language, yes.
I move approval with the amended language and the change that the hyphen be taken out of my last name.
Second.
What?
There's a hyphen in my last name.
Oh, I'm sorry. You caught me off guard.
Sorry.
I didn't know what that was.
You've been hyphoned.
Okay. I'm sorry, please say your motion again.
I motion to approve this letter as amended, also removing the hyphen out of my last name.
And I seconded it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Madam Chair, may I just one question?
Yes.
Maybe it would look better if the letter said, "May create a significant public health hazard," and include the other language that's, that's in the report, thereby... I don't know why it wasn't included, right? I mean, I think it would be a stronger letter if it went, "May create a significant public health hazard." Am I...
The other, I think that perhaps, Mr. Muscoli, the sentence you're referring to is, "However, the risk of irreparable damage to the only drinking water source on Cape Cod is too significant." Is that the sentence?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so you, what paragraph are you in?
So confused here, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, you have a motion and a second on the floor.
I do, I understand that, but we have discussion amongst the board.
If, Madam Chair, if I may, so, Mr. Muscoli, if you wanted to include that phrase, perhaps you would say, so adding to that sentence, which, so this is the first, first paragraph, I guess I'll have to read the whole thing to make it clear. "In light of the US EPA's Region One Sole Source Aquifer Project Review of the Multipurpose Machine Gun Range at Joint Base Cape Cod, which finds that the project may create a significant public health hazard, and further finds the risk of irreparable damage to the only drinking water source on Cape Cod is too significant." I don't know if that language works.
Then the, then the Falmouth Select Board unanimously recommends this project be rejected.
Right, right. If you wanted to make the case, use the stronger wording in the EPA draft determination.
Are you making that a motion, Mr. Muscoli?
Well, I guess, I'm sorry, but I think my point is that their, their draft says, "May contaminate Cape Cod aquifer, thereby creating a significant public health hazard." I think that should be included in the letter. That's what I'm saying. "May contaminate the Cape Cod aquifer, thereby creating a significant public hazard."
Okay, it's a little redundant, because it says it here in the next paragraph.
I agree.
Significant public health risk.
Well, I, I think you would take it out at the, at that point, that's all I'm saying. I think, I think it would be better if it said, "Which finds, which determines that, or which found that it may contaminate the Cape Cod aquifer, thereby creating a significant public health hazard, the Falmouth Select Board recommends."
Doesn't it say that right here, though? "May create a significant public..."
But it's not saying, it's, it's not saying why. I think that, what I think we need to say...
Oh, because it's sole source.
Is that, we, we want to reference the fact that it may contaminate the Cape Cod aquifer, which is what Chair Taylor said at the very beginning.
I see what you mean. Of course, that's said in the second paragraph, so, you know, right here.
It's right there.
It's pretty clear there.
Yeah, and what it does is, it's key to the decision, the draft reports main finding, and then it lists them, right? So, I, I think, I think it's okay the way it is. I think it, I think it flows fairly well.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we have, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the letter with the edits, and to send it on. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Okay. All right, approved request from Cape Cod Guangping Tai Chi Kwan Club.
Yes.
Did I say that all right?
Yep.
Okay. For a waiver of the special event permit fee for the Tai Chi practice at Marina Park on Saturday mornings from 6:10:23 to 12:30:23. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This special event is approved to take place for 30 days this year. The full fee would be $750. Last year, the board approved a full fee waiver. The prior year, the board approved a reduction to the fee, but not a full waiver. We have included in your packet the calculation of what the reduced fee would be if the board wishes to consider that.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, I'm Diane Marshall, I'm the president of the Cape Cod Tai Chi Club. They have been practicing there for probably 15, 20 years, so, we would just like to continue.
Okay, questions?
Is this offered for free for anyone who wants to participate?
We are a club, so we do have membership fees. We do do lessons. They generally cost about $30, and it gives them three months of membership with the club, so once they learn the first few moves, they can continue learning by just attending one of, we have 12 practices a week, so they can just come along and practice.
So, it's one time $30, then?
And then it's a yearly membership fee.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all volunteers, our teachers are volunteers, yeah.
So, there's no, excuse me...
Mr. Brown?
So, there's no actual fee for the event, just a membership fee?
No, there's no fee for the event.
Okay.
No, we like to just gather, practice, go home. It's, we're usually finished in about an hour and a half.
I move that we waive the fee.
Total fee?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to waive the total fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, request for variance to the sign code, off-premise signs, Falmouth Art Market, Art Market Tuesdays, 6/27/23 through 8/29/23. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first time the Art Market has requested a variance to place signs on town property for this recurring event. Details regarding the number of signs and locations are included in your packet.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns?
I like the idea of having signs. I often forget, some signs would be a great addition.
And it's quite artistic.
It looks great.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Excuse me, can I say something?
Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Come on. I'm Jane Parhella, and I help organize the Falmouth Art Market, and this is the first time we have done this, you know, on town property, and I had a list here, and are we, is that accepted, to put signs on Noonan Park and on T-Ticket Park? This is one of the, the things that was presented.
Yeah, we do have that list.
Yeah, and that's, everything's okay with that?
If the board approves it, then the list that you have requested for off-premise promotional signage would be approved.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought that was going to be questions today.
Fair question, fair question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Since you, I do have a question. So, you're, are you thinking about putting these up on Tuesdays and down after the event?
Right. Up in the morning, and then every, all the signs will come down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I, I believe I have a motion and a second to approve. Did you make a motion?
I'll make a new one, I'm, I'm moving approval.
Okay.
Anybody want a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And they're approved for each place. Okay, we will go on to the review of our Select Board liaison assignments. In your packet, you have a copy. I also really, really want people to look at the liaison policy, which is also in your, in your packet, so that you remember what your role is as a liaison, and I want to bring especially number three. The role of the liaisons is not to do the work of or influence their assignments. Under no circumstances are liaisons to engage in any deliberation or participate in any vote with their assignments. Please read the liaison policy again, and let's take a look at what our assignments are. And now that Mr. Patterson is not on the board, I have a request, Mr. Muscoli, I would like to include the school committee in my assignment, if you're okay with that?
Uh, yes, I would be, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And Water Quality Management Committee's not filled in, but I've been very interested in that, and I've been attending it, so...
And why, did we just miss that?
I don't know, it's just, the box has never been checked.
Okay.
I just always have gone, because I used to be on that committee.
Okay, so we will put Mr. Brown.
I'd like to point out, the EDIC is currently going to Mr. Muscoli if he's taking Mr. Patterson's assignments, are you?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Very interested in that committee, thank you.
Madam Chair, I've enjoyed my time on the, while I was sitting in on the Veterans Council Committee. I'd like to take that over if I could.
Okay.
I've still never participated with the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative. I heard they exist, but I don't know. Never could find them.
I think they're defunct. They did exist.
Okay.
Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, that was headed up by Andrew Gottlieb, I believe, but it was disbanded several years ago.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm still on coastal ponds. Does anybody have a conflict that they need to change? Pedestrian, I mean, excuse me, Madam Chair, I think we should...
Oh, thank you, Mr. Brown, yeah, are there any conflicts? Mr. Muscoli, were you interested in the pedestrian, the bike?
The bikeways, yes, I was.
Is that something you would like to take from Mr. Zalinski?
If, if, if he's willing, I would be interested in doing that, yes.
Absolutely, Mr. Muscoli, thank you.
Any, any other changes, Ms. Scott Price, Mr. Brown?
I don't feel like I need any, but I'd be willing to consider if somebody else has a conflict or...
I was just going to ask Ms. Scott Price about the recreation committee, if you're...
If you would like that one?
Yeah.
You're more than welcome to.
Okay.
The other one you were thinking about, Mr. Muscoli, was council on aging, but, you know, you're loading yourself up.
Let him.
I'm just telling you.
Again, who's on the council of aging?
Me.
You, I, I would like to be on that, on that committee, yes.
You may have it.
Also, as a reminder, we don't have to go to every, we're not...
No.
We don't go to every single meeting.
Yeah, it's a bit of a trick.
Okay, any other proposed changes? Did you get them all, Mr. Johnson Staub?
I believe I did.
Okay. So, we will get this out to you. I think we need, do we need to vote this?
Yes.
I believe we do. Okay, so, I would accept a motion with the amendments to approve.
To move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and I will read through them. If there's anything you would like to hold, please notify me as the chair. I'm going to hold number one, just for some clarification, from Mr. Johnson Staub, 1A. I'll move on to administrative orders. Vote to approve a letter of interest in applying for ownership of the Nobbska Lighthouse property. Approved letter to the Steamship Authority regarding early morning ferry schedule. Request for a variance to the sign code off-premise signs for the Rotary Club of Falmouth, day of play Saturday 7/8/23. Request a variance to the sign code off-premise signs Rotary Club of Falmouth Butterfly Garden Day Saturday 8/5/23. Vote to authorize grant application to be submitted to the Coastal Zone Management for design of improvement of storm water management on Thomas B. Landers Road.
I'd like to hold that just for a little bit of information, if I could, if there's anything available.
That's fine. F, vote to authorize grant application to be submitted to the Coastal Zone Management for design improvement of storm water management at Surf Drive and Fresh River. Okay, so, moving forward, I will entertain a motion to move the consent agenda, holding License A and Administrative Order E.
To move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go back to License A. There's just a little bit of confusion in, Mr. Johnson Staub, if you would just speak to that quickly?
Certainly, so, the, a license for an automatic amusement device does require a vote of the Select Board. It does not require a hearing, you know, as is required for a transfer of an alcohol license, for example, or under the Select Board's policy recently adopted, you require a hearing for an entertainment license, but the board has not had any, neither the state nor the board has any requirement for a hearing for an amusement device. So, what is an amusement device? It is a video game. I believe it would apply to, for example, that cage that has a little claw that drops down on the furry toys would be an automatic amusement device. There is a, a separate category with, under automatic amusement device for jukebox, and this application did not select that box, so they are not seeking to have a jukebox. They have indicated that they plan on leasing a video game or multiple video games, although, as has been pointed out, they have very limited space, so I don't know if they have space for more than one.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
So, I would move approval.
Yes, would you like to say something, Mr. Boszynowski?
Once again, Dave Boszynowski, President of Falmouth Heights Merivista Neighborhood Association, being in our neighborhood focus area. First of all, I'd like to say, I really do appreciate what Shipwrecked has done with their facility there. They've really improved it considerably, and I, I enjoy the facility, enjoy going there, and as Mr. Brown did, in approving the, the initial application from Shipwrecked, for the, from Shipwrecked, I think he, he made a comment, as long as they maintain the same pizza recipe, he was in approval, and I agree, they've done a very good job. I reached out to the owner of Shipwrecked and asked several questions of concern of our members, and one of which was, was his intention to turn this into an arcade type of venue, and kids from the beach would be crossing in bathing suits and coming into the establishment and, and playing video games. He confirmed to me that, no, that was not his intention, and he, I, I really haven't seen the entire application, whether he described what his intentions were, but he did send me an email and said that, over the winter, he had temporarily moved the, the hotel check-in location from a small location in the outside courtyard to the, to the hotel rooms of the adjacent building, and that left that check-in facility vacant, and he wanted to turn it into a small, he used it, it was try to make the hotel guests have a nicer... It was try to make the hotel guests have a nicer, more welcoming experience when they check in their stay, and like to add two or three video games in the old hotel office for the kids and adults to play while they wait for, or while they wait for a table. So I did have some questions as to how that would be managed and run. What kind of games was he anticipating? He said two or three games. He liked the old retro styled games of car racing and Pac-Man type of thing. And I had asked whether anyone could come to play these games, and he said, well, that was not his intention. The bottom line was, and I was asking, I would like to ask the select board the appropriateness of asking whether the use of that facility be limited to patrons only. That's my thought. Otherwise, I really can't have an objection to what he's trying to accomplish there.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether there's a management issue of kids in a separate room, but that's something he would have to deal with.
Right.
I don't know. I would, I would want to consult with town council before imposing such a restriction. I mean, what's the definition of a patron if they're, if they're paying to play the game? Is that not a patron?
I would think, yeah.
Right.
They have to get some language on it anyway.
So it is, it's a, and I did refresh my memory on the plan that was submitted. It's an area of 11 feet by seven and a half feet, so it could accommodate up to three games.
So how would the board like to manage this?
Well, I mean, if we had the language, as Mr. Johnson Staub said, it's, if you're playing the game, you're a patron, aren't you? I mean, so I don't think that really changes anything.
Is a six-year-old child a patron? I mean...
If they're putting money in a machine, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Town council question, I guess.
Hi, Debbie Scott. I was wondering if there's a timeframe? Do they can only use it if there are patrons in there? Is there a certain time that they're open? Because they can check in at any time, correct? Would they, would the video games be, have a timeframe to it?
Thank you.
Yeah, so it does say the hours of operation are 11:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Oh, that's reasonable.
So is it not appropriate to table this for a few minutes to get some input from town council, what is and what isn't a patron?
I'd say so.
I mean, is this in time sensitive to his business, is it? I mean, three, three video games, if we wait one more meeting?
Probably not.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think if the board is interested in restricting access to the game room, we can, I can certainly speak with town council to see if that can be accomplished.
Well, I'm not looking to restrict anything. I'm looking for, personally, I'm looking for the legality of the language.
Well, I'm just saying, if the board doesn't want to restrict access, then you wouldn't entertain the change at all. You just approve the license as requested. But if you do want to restrict access, we can look at how we might go about doing that.
What would the board like to do?
Get the opinion from town council of what's our capacity to manage it and keep it separate? I don't know, I mean...
We have the license and authority.
Just a minute.
What are the restrictions that you can impose on somebody?
Right, can we at all?
And also the definition of a patron. Is a kid putting a quarter in a video game a patron of the establishment, or is there other criteria?
Which of that opinion, Madam Chair, we'll have, you can base it, it may change your mind on what restrictions or lack thereof you put on.
I think we can, if the board wants, we can hold it. Let me take one more public comment.
I would just be interested, too, in the capacity of the room, how would you restrict the capacity, how many people could be there?
Thank you.
The capacity issue is that, that's...
Yeah, I think that would be per fire code.
That's the word I couldn't get out, fire code.
It would be a different, that's a different question. Okay, so I will take a motion to defer.
Seek more information?
Okay.
So move.
Peter, could you put on that question to with more unaccompanied minors, how that fits into this?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, so that's a four to one.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we will move to, Mr. Brown, you held. Vote to authorize grant application to be submitted to Coastal Zone Management for design of improvement of storm water management on Thomas B. Landers Road.
Just looking for clarification of what the exact location is. I know I've read this description, but is this the connector between Sandwich Road and Thomas B. Landers Road, or is it Thomas B. Landers Road itself?
Dr. Gladfelter can speak to that.
Hi, it's Gladfelter again. It's, so Thomas B. Landers Road, it's the connection between...
Sam Turner?
Tanner, Turner and Sandwich Road.
That little...
What happens is both of those are higher, and they both have stop signs, and lots of gravel and trucks go across. Many, many, many gravel trucks go across, and they stop at those signs.
Mm-hmm.
In a big rain, the water washes down, actually from Sandwich Road and then Thomas B. Landers Road, and it pours into the river. So basically, that's why the title is Kunemesset River Restoration. It's to maintain water quality, good water quality throughout the, it, the Kunemesset is ranked as a high water quality river, but in, in these intense rainstorms, a lot of sediment and stuff that's dropped on the road washes into it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I move approval?
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to authorize a grant application to be submitted to the Coastal Zone Management for design of improvement of the storm water management on Thomas B. Landers Road. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll just say, I mean...
Thank you.
We're putting, the conservation, the commission slash department is putting it in, but we're working very closely, obviously, with DPW. So Mark and Jim and I have had field trips out there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, review and vote to approve the minutes of meetings, public session, May 22, 2023?
I'd just like to comment that we are getting these in a really timely manner, which is very much appreciated.
We are.
That's what I'm tracking.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Muscoli.
Just one correction on the update, Knobsko Light land disposition. I actually recused myself from that discussion, so the vote would have been four, yes.
You are correct. Thank you. Any other corrections?
I don't have any.
Okay, so with that amendment, would anyone like to move the minutes?
I'll move the amendment, Chair.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't see executive session minutes.
I was just going to say, to take the wind out of your sail, we had that nice compliment, and we don't have the executive session minutes, and that's on me.
That's okay.
Because I did not have a chance to look at those.
Okay, town manager supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a few items. Actually, I did want to give a brief update on South Coast Wind, although Mr. Bosnowski took some of the, wind out of my sail again. There, I just want to reiterate, confirm, there has been no substantive dialogue in recent months. South Coast representatives have indicated they are attempting to renegotiate power purchase agreements, and that is in connection with the show cause hearing that Mr. Bosnowski referenced. They are also working on plans to meet the requirements of the independent system operator, which is more commonly known as the ISO, with respect to the plans for connecting to the regional power grid. I have not received any new information about Falmouth landfall options or the engineering of the cables and substations that would potentially be located in Falmouth since June of last year. And I do want to reiterate, the select board is not taking a position to support or oppose the project, and there has been no negotiation of a potential host community agreement. On a lighter note, the July 4 preparations are well underway. Acting Chief Brian Lowen has secured a commitment of 25 state troopers to provide details again this year, and this collaboration has worked well, worked well last year, and we should be in pretty good shape for that July 4 again this year. And I want to note that our incoming town manager, Michael Renshaw, starts on June 12. We look forward to welcoming him. He and I have been in touch to make arrangements for him to get set up with a computer and phone access, and we've begun to make some appointments for his first two weeks. And your next meeting is June 26.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. Select board reports.
Got anything? Nope. Okay. I attended a Water Quality Management Committee meeting today. Was happy to hear that the consultant from UMass Dartmouth has concluded that the Herring River Marsh and Crocker Pond seem to be... The modeling shows that there'll be no, not no impact, but not enough impact to cause us concern about expanding our use of beds 14 and 15 for our temporary wastewater discharge, so that was good news. And I attended Steamship Authority meeting last Monday to... Strategic planning meeting, but I was unable to strategically make any comments, because the meeting was live, but the audience was on Zoom. There was no chat function, so that was unfortunate. And the conclusion of the meeting came before the start of another meeting that I had at 4, so I couldn't get a word in. But I did follow up with another meeting at the Steamship Authority in person to solicit comments on the long-range planning efforts by the Steamship Authority. And I did comment significantly, and I don't know where that will go. I found it interesting that the consultant was focused on really language in a plan about long-range planning. But my comments were that I felt like actions were more important than words, and I reminded the consultant that I was a member of the Long Range Planning Task Force, and we had met for two years. And we were just starting to get to some substantive decision-making back in February, when we identified that we would like the Steamship Authority management to discuss potential options for an RFP for service from New Bedford, and to look into what the options would be to use more space at that site. Because as you know, the RFP was issued for service for freight from New Bedford, and no respondents submitted any RFP response. Although, although some did respond with letters saying that, you know, explaining the various reasons why the RFP just didn't work for them. And so there was only a one-acre site identified for use as a site to, to transfer from New Bedford. And at our meeting, to recap the lack of interest in the RFP, I recommended that Steamship Authority staff reach out to the port of New Bedford and Mayor Mitchell and find out whether or not there is any auxiliary sites that could supplement the use of that one-acre site. Because perhaps if there's a couple more acres around the corner, that could be a staging area, there could be something worked out. I was very disappointed to learn that, that outreach never happened, and we haven't met since March. And that seems as if we may be disbanded. I'm not sure what the status is. I sent an email to Stephen Sayers a couple of months ago, voicing my concerns that, you know, we, we have agreed that we're not going to meet during summer, because everyone's busy. But I was very disappointed that our whole planning process came to a halt in March. And I asked him what would be the plan going forward? Are we going to reassemble and, you know, have some more action? I was further disappointed by his response a few days later, that said, I'm sorry, I can't respond appropriately now, because I'm traveling to New York at the moment, but I'll get back to you later. Haven't heard from him since. And I talked to Bob Davis while I was at the electrification meeting, who was discussing electrification of ferries and the potential for use on that. And Bob said, oh, we know we owe you a response, and we'll get back to you, and, you know, haven't heard again. So the kind of long-range planning task force seems to be fading, and I don't know what the reason is. Maybe it's because they decided to go with a professional consultant to do their long-range planning. But my comments to the consultant were that they're focused on language and a plan on paper, whereas we could be doing actual real planning, and actual real opportunities are being missed right now. I could just elaborate that. I found it troubling that they're buying these three boats that are very similar, and probably in good shape, and they're pretty big boats. They're another whole lane wider than the existing boats. They could fit another whole lane of traffic, but they're cutting them in half and chopping, I think it's 15 feet off of them. That seems like an expensive exercise in futility, but the reason they're doing it is that they want to be able to modify the boats so that they can be used both here in Woods Hole and in Barnstable Harbor. And I just feel like the planning is just, doesn't make sense to me. Because why would you have to insist that the boats be interchangeable? I don't know everything about maritime, that's for sure. But Barnstable is a very shallow harbor. Nantucket's a very small island. It's a lot further away. It seems like it would be a different fleet. And, and to insist that they be interchangeable at the expense of chopping this boat down. If the boat was left at full size, they could spend the money, more, more money on electrification, rather than just saying it's something we'll think about in the future. Then again, if they had those boats still at full size, they'd have more capacity, less trips. Maybe we wouldn't need the 530 boat. So I just feel like the whole planning process has just gone askew, and I don't understand what the thing is. But in addition to the letter for the 530 boat, I'd like an agenda item to discuss the lack of long-term planning and the fact that I feel like that more help is needed in order to facilitate long-range planning by the Steamship Authority. I don't think they have the capacity to do it in-house. And I really think that we need to send a letter to our legislators saying that... I got a lot of ideas, and one of them is that I don't think that the Steamship Authority should continue to be a licensing authority for other carriers. I think that's a conflict of interest, and it's an impediment to progress. So I just, we, I got a lot, a lot of things to talk about with regard to the Steamship Authority, and I'd like to put it on the agenda for a future discussion.
Thank you.
I did FCTV's 30th anniversary. Congratulations to them.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah.
You did a great job of that, too.
Thank you.
I kind of covered my, my things in the recognition, so I have nothing further to report.
Okay, any further discussion about future agenda items? I still think we need to do a workshop and look at our strategic plan and look at what progress we've made. We talked about doing that quarterly. We haven't, but we might want to continue to think about that. And also, I really appreciate the update on the wind piece, because that was another thing I was thinking about for a, for a workshop, but I think you, you spoke to it, and I'm not sure we need to do that. And I would just, at some point, want to follow up from Doug, because I know you had reached out to the...
Kelsey Perry was the spokesperson, and I do have a call scheduled with her, 11 o'clock on Monday.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so if you could just...
Maybe we can have an update at our next meeting.
That would be great. Mr. Muscoli?
Yeah, I, I think we may want to ask town council to look into the implications of the Supreme Court case that came on real estate tax liens and the ability of towns to retain some of the equity. There was a decision, and there's been some articles in the Boston Globe about the fact that Massachusetts law is somewhat against what, what the Supreme Court held in this recent decision. So with the discussion we had the last, last meeting with respect to delinquent real estate liens and so forth, I think we should look into what that implication of that case is.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'll go to Ms. Scott Price, and then over to Mr. Zalinski.
I meant to ask Peter earlier, Mr. Johnson Staub, excuse me, when does the new police chief start?
We don't have an official date. He's looking to make that sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to put something on the agenda, or at least get with town council. We had talked about it earlier on about... I need some more clarification on our investigative powers as select board members to be able to call witnesses and subpoena witnesses. I need some clarification on that going forward.
As outlined in the charter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion of future agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
No.
No, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.